I decided to keep it. I'm going to take it to Pittsburgh with me. Give it to you after I get back. It works fine, except for that plug.
Yeah, to come from the Evergreen side.
The plug's all messed up. The other thing, if you could give that to Brian. It's a receipt that I found for a bag check.
For the earthquake?
And the explanation.
I know, you just kind of think.
Yeah, one more back to Madison.
As you know, you have a lot of contracts with service providers. So what we want to do is basically have a way to measure service delivery so that we can measure service delivery of the contracts. So as a project, we are currently reviewing five of your contracts, the five largest contracts that you have. We're going to establish levels of service for those contracts. And this workshop was intended so that we're all on the same page as to what is a level of service and the difference between levels of service and performance measures. And then the last part of the project, what we're going to do is basically talk about what your needs are immediately to have the optimized service delivery. We'll talk about what a public works services look like in five years for Kenmore and then a more long-term projection like what Kenmore Public Work Services will look like maybe in 20 years. So I have a little icebreaker exercise. If you guys have a piece of paper and you pull it out, what I want to do is give you guys a word and I want you to write a percentage or a number that you feel is associated with that word. So for instance, if I said that you always do something, what kind of percentage would that be? What kind of percentage does "always" mean? And so everybody's got to write it down and there's no cheating. If I say that you seldom do something, again, a percentage of what "seldom" means to you. So if you seldom mow your lawn, which is where I'm at in my house, what does that mean? Often. I often mow my lawn. And lastly, I rarely mow my lawn. So I'll pick on you a little bit. So Councilmember Stacy, what did you have for "always"?
100%.
100%. Councilmember Smith?
95%.
95%. Okay. There you go. Councilmember Sperry, what did you have for "seldom"?
Less than 5% of the time. 5% of us.
Less than 5% of the time. City manager Carl's?
Carl Lindsey.
Carl Lindsey, what did you have for?
For "always"?
For, I think we're on "seldom".
I didn't write it down yet.
Oh, okay. Oh, man!
He's still working on "always".
It's fine.
We're not going to ask the attorney.
All right, yeah, yeah.
It depends.
Okay. Maybe I'll get to the moral, which you guys can probably gather, right? A lot of times when we start talking about levels of service and performance measures, especially when you're working with contracts and contractors, if the language isn't clear and if there's not a clear measure, then a lot of times people's expectations aren't the same. You know, you guys were pretty close, actually. Usually there's a fairly wide disparity. So that's kind of, I think, one of the things that we were hired to do is to assure that you guys are receiving the services that you expect to be receiving from your service providers and that you're providing services to citizens and your customers in a way that they can expect. So, you know, I thought this was a pretty good exercise to illustrate that point and kind of have that in the back of your mind. And Scott's going to take it from here.
So I'm Scott Bash and I want to talk a little bit about the concept of levels of service. So service levels, service level agreements have been around for quite a while, but it's not real common in the United States for public service providers to have a service level agreement with their customers, in this case, the community. If you look at Northern Europe, Australasia, it's actually embedded in how water utilities and public services are set up. If you're collecting garbage or if you're providing services like park services or streets, these are things that are pretty common, especially at a legislative level, in other countries. It's just recently started to be adopted in the United States about 10 years ago. And there are a few cities in Washington that have adopted levels of service and level of service agreements. The city of Shoreline's going through that right now, Bellevue. Seattle Public Utilities has started to adopt levels of service, as well as places like King County, WTD, the city of Olympia, city of Vancouver. And the idea here is that with a level of service concept, you have someone who requests the service and then you have someone who provides that service. And the key part is that part in the middle, which is where the handoff, where the agreement takes place, that's the level of service. The concept here is that when we write a level of service, it needs to be written in words that the customer understands. If I were to be providing something like mechanical services on an air conditioning system, HVAC system, and I put all this technical jargon in what it is that I'm providing, it's quite possible the customer would not understand that. But what the customer does understand is whether it's hot or cold or moist or dry or these sort of things. And so if we write a level of service agreement, it has to be written in those terms that's understood by both parties. Now, when we talk about a public service provider, one of the key things is that we have the level of service in one hand and then we have the amount of money that it costs to provide that level of service. And so when we make a level of service statement, there has to be a balance between the cost of service and that service being provided. Because as we know, things change. The economy could go in an unfavorable direction and we have less money, then we're not able to provide that same level of service. So we have to say, well, how do we balance these out? So if the economy goes down and we have less budget, maybe the budget goes down by 10%, then we have to know where the service levels are in terms of maintaining that balance. Likewise, if the community says we want a higher level of service, then we have to be able to explain what's the incremental cost of providing that service so that we can make an educated decision. So this is what the level of service and the service equester, service provider relationship is really about. Now, when we talk about describing a service in terms of service levels, it's really about how much or of what nature. We put some specifications, some conditions behind it, a frequency. So we normally don't use the word like seldom or always or rarely or sometimes. We put a specific metric. 95% of the time between the hours of 8 to 5, 85% of the time on off-hours, things to that effect. We all hear about things like 24 hours, 7 days a week type service or 24/7. But what's important when we define a level of service is to make sure we put those specifications and conditions by how we're going to manage that service level. So when we talk about the city of Kenmore and we look at the different contracts that the city has in providing services to its community, we have agreements that take place at different levels. When we look at the city of Kenmore as a whole and providing services to the community, we have a service level agreement with that customer. Now, what's interesting is, and I've lived in a number of different places, and one of the places I lived was in Sydney, Australia. And they have a level of service for the water department. And the service level is something along these lines, is if I were to turn on my water and nothing were to come out of the tap and that were to occur for more than two hours, I don't pay for water for that entire month. So the service level agreement is that if any homeowner were to be without water for two hours or more, then they don't pay for water for that entire period. Now, that sounds rather dramatic. I highly doubt that's going to happen in the United States anytime soon. But when you think about what this means is that if they were to close a valve because of construction or bypass for whatever reason, had to turn off water to, say, 1,000 homeowners, they know exactly what the cost is going to be for doing that. And then they can start to work backwards and how do I mitigate this? How do I mitigate this loss of revenue? So they would do things like pump around or do bring bottled water and take that out to the community ahead of time and let them know plenty of time in advance that we're going to turn your water off on such a date, it's going to be off for this period of time, and here's your alternative sources of water. And they do a lot of forward-thinking planning that way. Now, this is something that's actually built into legislation in Sydney Water's case. It goes all the way to what would be equivalent of our state government. And the services are regulated at that level. So in the statement of a service level with city of Kenmore, we provide that to our customer, in this case, the community. But we also have the opportunity to provide that service, not with city employees, but through contracts. And that's part of what we're looking at, or at least contracts. So we have these underpinning contracts that have requirements built into that. And the key thing of why a level of service is important in this discussion is that that person, that company, that supplier, who's providing that service to you, the city, needs to understand in what context that service is being used. Because they're the frontline people that are out there cleaning the catch basin or doing the landscaping on the park or whatever it might be. They're the ones that are maintaining the aesthetics of the community or they're the ones that are mitigating the flood that might occur or about to occur. And when they understand the context of that service, they are going to be better service providers. The other thing is that when it comes down to writing the specifications of that contract, you can put those specifications, those contracts, in context with what the service level is that you signed up with the community, with, in this case, the ratepayers or the citizens. Now, also, within the city, there's a number of groups of people that work with each other that depend on one another. And you can have internal units or these operational level agreements as well. So that if I'm in this building and I have somebody who's maintaining this facility, then we would expect things like the temperature and the clock to be on time and things of that nature. And these can be internal service level agreements if you want to think of it that way. So the concept of a level of service is it really helps to provide focus and helps to understand a person's purpose and their job so that when we have everybody that's providing services throughout the entire city, everybody knows what their purpose is and everybody's focused on the common things. So the trick is to make these very simple. And when we can make them simple, it helps to guide us in what we're doing with our long-term strategic plan. We can look at where we're at today and what our levels of service are. We can look at where we want to be in the future and what our levels of service are. And then when we start to develop our short-term objectives, our long-term goals, then what we can do is see how these things are continuously helping us in terms of achieving our long-term vision, but also how well are we meeting the expectations that our community has. And of course, anytime we embark on any type of strategic objective, we also have to maintain our values and our principles to make sure that we're doing things within the law and with respect for the individual, respect for the environment, and guiding ourselves within levels of integrity. So the levels of service concept is one that helps us in a number of ways, but it really becomes more of a guide than anything else. So when we look at it in terms of cost, this is really the tricky part. This is the part where it's really important to engage with the community. As an example, the city of Shoreline just went through something like this with the surface water utilities. And what happened was the city had specified four levels of service and then what they did is went out to a survey with the community and then also had some focus groups, had people come in through an open house and were asking questions like, what do you see in terms of level of service? So if you look at the graph, if we had a very, very high level of service, then what would happen is that we'd spend more money in capital, we'd spend more money planning for the future. But if we were to spend that money planning for the future and spending a lot more on capital items and bigger things and better things and the high-quality aspects of what we do as a service provider, chances are we'd have more or we'd have less of those reactive actions. We have a lot less of the unplanned actions. Conversely, if we had a very low level of service, we wouldn't spend as much upfront. We wouldn't do as much on the product side, but we'd be in a highly reactive world. We'd have a lot more of those unplanned actions. So the trick is to find that common low-cost point. And in the graph, it shows it right in the middle, but oftentimes it can be a little bit farther to the high side, a little bit to the lower side. The only way to really determine this is to ask. You have to ask the customer, ask the community, ask the citizens, what is the level of service you expect? And then start to work backwards as what do we have to do to meet that level of service? How much is it going to cost? And then look at that balance between the level of service, the expectation of the community, and what is the cost to provide that level of service. What's really interesting is that when you start to do this through, say, a survey or a focus group or any interaction with the community, is that oftentimes they're willing to pay just a little bit more to get that much more of a level of service. There's an example in a town in Georgia that I worked at that, this was years ago, and it was really a retirement community. And one could say that the citizenry there was frugal. They didn't like to spend a lot of money on public services. But they had a major problem. They were along a river and there was a lot of flooding that was being caused by overflows of not being able to take the surface water and remove it from the streets. And this flooding was causing a lot of problems with the people who used to walk along the river. And so the city started to do some planning and they realized that if we could only control this extra rainfall that occurred, then we could make this a better park, a better place to live, and the aesthetics would be that much better. But it was going to take money and take a lot of money, building some structures to be able to maintain and treat the water. So the first thing they did is they started to figure out what the cost of the project was. Then they went on a public outreach campaign and did a lot of education and they brought in different types of customers from institutional areas and residential customers. And they found out what were the hot points, what were the issues the community really wanted to deal with. As an end result of this, when they took it out to election and to, this was a part of a normal monthly, or sorry, annual election, they got 96% of the community to agree that these facilities need to be built. And the real trick as to how they actually got this high of a passage was that they involved the community, they asked the community what they were looking for, and they started to look at and dissect the individual services that this is going to be being provided and how much impact this had on, in this case, the property tax of the individuals. And the concept of levels of service is that an educated customer will make an educated decision as long as they understand what it is that they're buying. So when we talk about this within a contract, if we look at the people that are providing landscaping to the city and we look at what's the purpose of that landscaping to the community, then we put this in context of how much money we want in that contract versus what's the true benefit and both tangible and intangible benefits to the community as a result of that. So there's a number of examples, and we've just popped up a couple of them here. The easiest one is the one on the bottom, which is basically meet all regulatory requirements and meet these regulatory requirements within budgeted resources, meaning that this is what we planned and this is what we're doing and we're meeting exactly what we expected. Oftentimes, if you ask the citizens, they'll say, well, of course we expect you to meet regulatory requirements. But the problem is that sometimes we have to exceed some of our budgetary requirements. It might be a wet weather event or something like that. So it's almost impossible to meet all regulatory requirements 100% of the time. So the level of service needs to be stated within some sort of a parameter such as a budget. Other things like monitoring system performance, such as the surface water system, or being able to provide reliable and continuous service with the least risk impact, that means that there needs to be some statement about what is risk and what are we willing to accept. And the one, like 24 hours, seven days a week type service, this is be able to respond to emergencies and look at those things that are really unplanned within a certain timeframe. The responsiveness to a customer's service request, that example, being there within an hour during daytime hours or within two hours when it's after hours. These are the types of examples that we would use in terms of a level of service statement. So in developing a level of service, again, it's extremely important to talk to the customer and talk to all stakeholders within the city, not just people that are within the city limits, but those people that come to visit or work on a regular basis. So we look at it from a perspective of the political community, the various suppliers, the ratepayers themselves, other governments that provide services or inter-jurisdictional agreements that might take place, the employees themselves, and also things like environmental activists and the media, because all of them have some involvement in some regard to the services that are being provided. So how do we go about building one of these things? How does this relate to the project that we're doing? We first look at those services that are being provided and we look at who are the customers that receive those services. And when you meet with the customers and you look at the expectations of the customer, then what we do is we try to align the supplier to those services with the customer. And when we look at the customer needs and expectations of services and start to align the service providers with that customer, that's what we talk about when we say levels of service. But then within the organization, what we need to do is go down and look at all of those specific activities that are necessary to meet that service expectation. So if you look at a contract for landscaping, it's look at the specifics of how they do that. It might vary depending on whether it's a park or if it's in a greenway. If it's cleaning catch basins or doing something in terms of maintenance of a stormwater facility, there needs to be some specifications as to what those activities are and that needs to be written into the contract. So we look at the levels of service in terms of the customer and their expectations and then we look at the actions that the city or suppliers need to do. And we ask ourselves, what is the information we need to be able to manage these activities to run the business? And then we have to ask ourselves, what are those metrics of good performance? And those become the key performance indicators. So the real thing that we want to leave behind with this concept here is that there's a difference between a level of service and a performance metric. The level of service is the business result that you're trying to achieve. The key performance indicator is the thing you have control over. So if you look at the end result, work your way back up, and you start to say, what are the things that we can measure on a regular basis? What are the things we can measure daily? We can use in terms of accountability and responsibility with the staff that we've got? What are the things we can look at in the contracts and we can have in terms of like weekly or daily or even hourly in case monitoring of these contracts? And are our contractors providing this at the right performance indicator to meet our level of service expectations? It's kind of like if I was in the manufacturing business and I'm manufacturing pins. What I could do is I could stand at the end of the conveyor belt and check each pin and make sure that it works. That would be my quality control. The other thing I can do is I can go up into the process of how pins get made and look at each component and make sure that each component is working. So if I measure the cap and I look at how this fits on there and within that tolerance, that would be a key performance indicator and I'm spending less time throwing bad pins out at the end of the conveyor belt. We think of the same thing in terms of our service contracts with our suppliers. If we look at the key performance indicators that those contracts have, the requirements of those contracts, if those things are being met, then we meet the final expectation. Does the park look good? Does the road look clean? Is the drain working the way it was designed? All these sort of things helps to mitigate the risk of flooding, for example, or to improve the aesthetics of the greenways and to improve the aesthetics that the community sees on a regular basis. So what's required in looking at the contracts is to start to put these different services into categories. So it could be something like ensuring environmental protection or being a good neighbor or being responsive to the community. And then we have to go down and look at what are those things that become good metrics? These become the key performance metrics, these become key performance indicators, these become the things that we monitor and measure within each contract. As an example, if you were to measure things like aesthetics or measure things like regulatory compliance or look at things like cost, all these sort of things can be written into a contract. And then what we do would have a regular report with the supplier and make sure they're meeting those requirements. And most importantly is that that contractor or that supplier, that vendor, needs to understand the work that they're doing and how that aligns with the level of service. It gives us a basis of focusing on the same thing and having common language in our discussion. Because the fact is, and I think every one of us who's a customer's been in this situation, is that sometimes the suppliers give us something different than what we'd expected. So when we can document what the expectations are and work all the way back into the contract levels, we're more likely to have good contracts, more likely to have people providing it at the service that we expect them to provide. So the final little diagram that we want to share with you is where do we see this level of transparency in the public? There is lots and lots of data in a city. And the data is the lowest level of visibility. There may be some people that can see that data, but most people don't. The performance indicators are the things that get shared at this level. These are the things at the management level at the city council review. It's part of the fiduciary responsibility, if you will, of yourselves as elected officials. It's also part of the discussion that needs to take place when you start to move into service level agreements with the community. But at the highest level, these customer service levels, that's what the public sees. This is where the focus is. These are the things that people expect to see on a regular basis. It's language that they're comfortable with. So what we try to do in looking at these contracts is try to make these levels of alignment. And that's something that we're working on right now in the current phase of the contract.
Right. So getting back to where we're at overall in this project, I'm going to come back to this slide, but first I want to talk about. So we're going to review the current contracts. We're going to work on that data tier. And then we're going to come up with some levels of service and some measures and come back and present those to you guys in workshop two. The reason why we kind of went with this format was I wanted to have a common understanding of, you know, what we're doing with these levels of service and these measures so that when we come back to you guys in a public forum, you know, we're not kind of blindsiding you with like what we came up with as a way to manage these contracts and to look at where you guys need to be or may want to be in the next five and 20 years. So again, right now, we're reading your contracts. We're reading also some of the state mandates that you guys sent. So we're in that data phase. When we're done with that, we'll come back to you guys and talk about the, and we'll come up with some performance indicators. We'll come back to you guys and talk specifics, talk about what we saw in the contracts, how we think we can measure performance of the contracts, how we think we can better manage service delivery and control the contracts. And maybe we try to align the service levels with your comprehensive plan and with the goals that you guys have already kind of established. So that's kind of where we're going to be with the project. And we'll see you again, I guess, for workshop two. Yeah?
Just curious, where's Lake Forest Park with this?
Excuse me?
Where's Lake Forest Park with this? I mean, don't we share Public Works Net with Lake Forest Park?
They are contractor.
Okay.
So just like the other contracts we have with King County or private vendors, landscape companies, Lake Forest Park is just another contractor.
Just contractor. We're going to do what we need to do.
Yes.
Wonderful. Thank you. Brent?
Will you be going through the performance indicators on each one of the contracts?
Well, there-
Or is that more of a general thing when you come back to us?
Currently, there are no performance indicators on the contracts. So we've given an initial read-through of the contracts. And so one of the problems, I think, that was in RFP or one of the, our tasks, right, is to be able to better control service delivery. So what we want to do is read through the contracts and have some suggested performance measures to better manage those contracts. There are some performance measures in some of the contracts, but yeah, so we're reading through five of your contracts per our contract.
Okay.
And establishing a first run at performance measures and service level agreements. We'll come back to you guys in a second workshop, let you see those, and we can talk about them at that point. So I don't know if that answers-
No, no, that does. I wasn't exactly sure how much detail we were going to receive on that side of it. Then just one, and I think I know the answer to this, but I just, I want to, I'm curious. Does this in any way, does any of your contract, will it cover what performance indicators would be in franchise agreements or is this strictly Public Works?
That's correct. We're just talking about Public Works operations.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
The question that was coming to my mind as you're going through this is of learning how this fits in with our priority-based budgeting and establishing priority levels for various programs that are involved and how we implement those programs, who's doing it, whether we're getting their money's worth and so on.
Yeah, that's part of what we want to look at from a category standpoint. It's important to put it in words that are already, that the city's already comfortable with.
Okay. The other, you have something to add?
I was going to add, if you flip back to the table where you, yep, that one. This is an example, but we talked about how our priority-based budgeting and we have our own categories. So we were talking about that as a team.
Okay. And the other comment I had was, I think it was a long time ago, and I think Lori remembers it and David, but the rest of you might be new on the council, when we went through an exhaustive study of all the intersections in town. And there was a level of service rating for each direction coming into that intersection. And with that level of service evaluation, then we could come up with- And with that level of service evaluation, then we could come up with rationale or justification for improvements on those intersections, the flow through them in various directions and so on. So, you know, we did that there, and I think that's a similar kind of thing. It's a service that the citizens expect out of an intersection, and if traffic's backing up in one direction, they expect us to fix it.
Yeah, when you have a list of capital projects, as an example, and if you were to rank each project with some sort of a priority ranking, usually the level of service or the risk of not meeting that level of service can inform that that priority is. So if you only have a certain amount of money, you can draw a cut line and know exactly what projects are going to have the biggest impact on service level.
Yep. Thank you.
Councilor Sperry?
We have a really unique city in that we have citizens who really love their community, and we have a lot of volunteerism that contributes to having it, you know, be a very attractive, clean place to live. And so I'm hearing contracts, but how would that factor into this whole idea of level of service and all?
It's not in our scope of work, but I'll tell you a story. I built...
The story's not in our scope of work?
No, the story is.
So we get a story, is what we...
Yeah.
I love, stories are great.
But the citizen engagement, so I build a lot of trails where I'm from, and we were actually going out to get a grant to build more trails, and we were able to measure the amount of volunteer hours that we put towards the park, and we put that in our grant. And we also were able to kind of justify, you know, to, excuse me, to other citizens that, you know, that we added value to that. So it could be a performance measure that relates to a level of service. You know, we're being hired to look at service delivery from your contracts, but it's not a bad idea to use this whole level-of-service performance-measure concept, if you will, to measure things that are important to your community. And so if volunteer hours are important to your community, one of the nice things you can do is start to capture those hours and then give it back to the rest of the citizens to say, "Hey, these parks volunteers, you know, saved the city $60,000 based upon their volunteer." So, yeah, I don't know if that...
No, that's great. Yeah, some of that's already being done, but it sounds like there's, it's demonstrating the value, even though it's maybe not strictly what you're doing.
Yeah, there's real value in that, you know, so...
Any others? Councilor Curtis?
To me, this just seems a little squishy. So I know sometimes we get into deep conversations where I work on mission and vision and purpose and goals and tasks, and somebody says, "Oh, no, that's not a task, that's a goal." And to me, some of these, you make it sound really clear, but I'm not sure it's always as clear. I guess we'll see as you do your work whether, how I feel about it.
Yeah, I can both empathize and sympathize with you, because it's difficult. Sometimes when we write a level of service, we try to make it far too complicated. It always has to be written in terms of what the community can understand, and then you have to define, "What's the community? What's the reading level? What's the experience? What's the understanding the community has?" And sometimes it needs to be adjusted accordingly. But, you know, what's important, I think, is that whether you're talking about volunteerism or talking about things that are highly important in terms of public health and safety, it's important that everybody knows what it is that we're doing and why we're doing it. And so when you can write these service levels in that sort of a simple understanding, you could get more complicated as you go down deep into the layers of that, and people will. But it's always good, I think, especially at a policy body level, to have the ability to communicate with the customers as, "This is what we do, this is what you elected us to do, this is how we're doing it, and here's the results to show you." And if we can make that simple, simple metrics, easy to communicate, then we have a good program. But you're right, it is a difficult thing to get simplified.
And to piggyback on that a little bit, I'm going to go back a couple slides. Where's your table slide? You know, one of the things that we're looking at is really supplier to City of Kenmore. So we're kind of looking at that underpinning contract, and, you know, maybe as part of this, we start getting some service-level agreements and some contracts with the citizens. But again, in this job, I put my project manager hat on, we're kind of looking at the interface between the supplier, Lakewood, and Kenmore, and being able to manage those contracts and expectations there. I think it's a little bit less squishy in that case.
And I'd like to go back to really why we started this project. And for me, this project that we're working on right now is important because we're a contract city, and we do business in a lot of different ways. We have some in-house resources, but we contract with Lake Forest Park, we have a 522 contractor, we have surface-water contractors, we have a lot of contracts, and some of them are really big. And so, and we have varying levels of control. We have some, not Lake Forest Park, but we have some other contracts where it's just really hard to get the service we need. So the community expects the work to be done, we expect the work to be done, but we're having a hard time getting the work done. So really, for me, the whole start of this was, we feel like we have a pretty good idea of expectations but want to have that conversation where a level of service fits in. But we also know we could find some efficiencies and really have a conversation about the work that Jennifer and Richard's teams, because this is streets, parks, and surface water. We could have a conversation about how we do business. And we also know we have more parks coming online. We know that once we hit a certain population, we'll be responsible for the signals on 522. So we know there are some things coming that we really want to strategically think ahead, plan, be prepared for that. So when Justin showed the slide of, you know, in the next year, in the next five years, and then long-term, we want to be set up for how we want to do business for those milestones. So that's really how this project started, but we are learning and acknowledge and understand that level of service and meeting people's expectations is a large part of the conversation.
I just want to add one thing on that. Just in my experience in being here just over eight years, I'm so excited to be having this conversation and doing this project, because we've added so many different things over the last eight years, but we have not really had this conversation. I've been dying to have this conversation. So when Scott talked about balance between the resources and expectations, I mean, the expectations are just kind of going here and the resources are staying here. So just trying to really have a good, honest conversation about what those expectations are and what we can do with what we have. So, you know, if we can't do everything that we want to do, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't balance out. What are the priorities? What do we want, you know? What's our top priorities that we really want to accomplish? So I'm just thrilled to be doing this, so...
I think I know the answer to this, but we get a, at the end of this project, we get the level of services and the performance measures. We're going to have to wait till the next contract negotiation to roll all that in, all these contracts. Is that correct? We won't be able to do it right away. We'll have to wait till each one gets renegotiated.
Yes, but I think that for the most part, that these are, these contracts are really ready for renegotiating, so I don't think we're...
We're not...
There's not a lot of waiting period to, you know, make changes to these contracts. You know, we can start doing this immediately.
Thank you.
Councilor Smith?
Is, based on how the results are on these, is there any thought to whether or not certain things would be done in-house or not, or go out to contract based on the results of what we're finding in this? I'm just curious what, from an expectation standpoint of you and the city manager's office.
Most definitely. I mean, that is one of the key parts of this project is to be analyzing, you know, setting those level of services and really finding the efficiencies. I mean, what, looking at what we have and what we're getting. Is that matching up to what the expectations are? How can we provide that service? Does it make sense to go out to contract? Does it make more sense to pull it in-house? So that is definitely a major part of this project. Did you want to add anything?
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we've got 10 minutes or so. David?
Yes. I'm already looking. We were looking, and we're going to buy them, yes.
Majestic mountain, mine.
Yeah, we're going to buy it. And Chris's desk underneath it. Huh? Oh, yeah. So the special meeting is adjourned.